Okay, planning board meeting, allow me to plan board. October 3rd, 2022. Okay, a 6:30 hearing. Continue public meeting for site plan application for Mary Mavio, map 261, parcel 5, Starbucks Restaurant. Do I have a representative from Starbucks Restaurant here? Do I have a representative from Starbucks Restaurant here? Third and last time, do I have a representative from Starbucks Restaurant? Okay. If there's no new information, motion would be in order to close the hearing.
What, I mean, did you close it?
It's been a while, but close it or just leave it open?
Have you heard from them at all?
We haven't heard from them.
I heard from them at the end of last week, and they said that they were talking to their client and get back to me, but I haven't heard back for once.
That's it, Pam? So as far as I'm concerned, we had serious problems with their traffic. Okay, and, oh, Patrick's not representing Starbucks.
Nope.
It's a tough spot.
And the traffic was tough, and our peer review of the traffic was almost opposite to what they had. And we asked for a number of issues. Charonal Properties had a lot of issues with what they had. And evidently, they can't correct them because if they can't come into the hearing, so in my opinion, at this point, we should close the hearing. And if they want to resubmit.
It's been a long time, hasn't it?
If they don't want, if they want to resubmit, they can resubmit. Yeah, they could resubmit, but I don't think so.
So you want a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion is closed.
A motion made in second as to close the hearing? Any further discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote, roll call.
You and you, roll call, we're all here.
We're all here.
You're so used to saying "no."
Oh, we're all here. Say aye.
Aye.
All right, both say no. Motion carries. 631. Continue public information meeting for site plan application for 630 Central Street, map.
670.
670, Central Street, map 582, parcel 18 and 19, Trucking Transportation Building.
John, do you want to do the special permit to 632?
No, who does this? Oh, yeah, let us open that at the same time. Continue public hearing for special permit application for 670 Central Street, map 582, parcels 18 and 19.
For the record, Chris Airs with Canyon Engineering here behalf of the origin holdings LLC. This project is before the board a couple weeks ago for the construction of a transportation facility off of Central Street. Just to reorientate the boards, the projects. We have Central Street that runs along the page here, and you have the intersection with Lynchfield and Central kind of off the page. The property adjacent to it is a gas station, not that intersection. The project has remained generally the same as the previous unit. Just to recap, we're providing a single point of entry along Central Street that will give you access to parking areas and loading areas to the facility. You'll have the front entry, the parking lot area is paved with a green line area along the rear portion of the site. Stormwater will be accommodated with an infiltration basin and your typical catch basin, manhole systems. Two water connections remain with Central Street. We provide provisions for landscaping throughout the site, including landscaped beds and trees along the front of the property to provide a buffer between Central Street and the control building. And the entire site will be encompassed with a vinyl fence, salt wall fence for privacy and security purposes, abutting the use of residential properties. I should note that the property is split between the residential B and commercial districts. Effectively, all the commercial functions of the site are located within the commercial district, and the only work being performed within the residential district is limited to the construction of the actual infiltration basin. So it's a very innocuous use in the residential district. We'll provide additional pepper green shrubbery along the outside of the fence for additional visual impairment, if you will. That's pretty much the gist of the projects. If there's any questions from the board, I'll be more happy to answer them.
And then on the side, you're going to pretty much leave that untouched? Or something dark green?
Dark green?
Yeah.
So dark green is effectively the limited clearing. So that's all on the existing little green.
Okay. You are, you're not going to clear that?
No, this will remain.
That law will remain?
Yeah, so at the narrowest points, excluding an opening that goes to the adjacent property, you'll have about a 15-foot wooden buffer between the property line and the actual cleared.
There is an opening that goes into that?
It's, I believe this landowner might be gaining access to that area because it's been abandoned for a while, but it's just a clearing.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
It's an IBS, for the record, Bill, here to go. That was actually, the front piece was actually owned by the people that live in that house in the back, by the Burns family. The Burns family had a house there, and they used that field for years. And then from there, the parents are deceased, and the family sold off the house and sold off the land.
Okay. All right. I don't can, now, storage of vehicles. What do you have on storage of vehicles?
We have a small storage area for the company vehicles as they get brought to the site at night, located along the lower portion. We'll have about enough spaces for about 12 state vehicles.
And that's paved?
That will be regrind pavement.
Okay. Your calculation is based on regrind?
It's actually based on full pavement.
Full pavement?
So if they do eventually go forward and pave it, the drainage system is more than adequate.
Is that the whole area, full pavement thing?
So wherever you see a shaded grid is paved. Muddles, but we wanted to use regrind.
Okay. And so they're just going to use that for occasional turnaround?
Yep, so here's the turnaround of the larger vehicles when they come in and the storage of the company vehicles.
Okay, so there's no, there's no storage of vehicles, or will there be some storage of vehicles?
With the exception of a worst-case scenario where the vehicle that's transporting the vehicles, if you will, is unable to unload the products, then it would come back, but it would only be for.
Overnight, overnight, well, maybe weekend.
Depending on the worst-case scenario. Worst-case scenario, but it's not the intent to store vehicles on this property.
Okay. Now, why make that?
That's another whole thing.
So just to recap, the board.
We had this conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we did. Three or five three-car transport trailers.
Small trailer.
Yep.
Yeah, and we got to make it clear that if you ever do go to that point, there's a separate ordinance.
Yes.
We now have a storage of vehicles.
It's not, it's not through the council yet.
Well, it will be in the future.
Right.
Okay, it's coming down the pipe, so by the time they get this done, and that will be enacted, so, you know, this won't be grandfathered to. You know, just want to make it clear that if you ever get into, overnight's not a problem, but if any, if you wanted to get into a situation where you still are transferring any length of time, then you'd need a separate permit for that.
So I apologize, refresh my memory. Did we ask you for changes since the last time we met?
So at the last meeting, there was a snap to the timing of us getting this resubmit back into the board.
Okay.
So we continued based on that.
Yeah. Okay.
My memory serves.
Do I have any questions?
Wasn't there an objection from?
Well, we had a, we had a letter from the License Commission, okay? But their objections were probably based on the assumption of storage of vehicles, number one. And because they were close to homes, but the distances that we have here are considerable, so if they, if that building was right up against those homes on the right-hand side, then I'd say we'd have an issue. But with the building up front, and the way the business was explained to us, I don't, personally, I don't see it, an issue.
With the privacy fencing or?
Yeah.
Or the new requirements that will be coming down the pipe?
And new requirements will be coming down the pipe, so then the License Commission, we get involved with that.
Is anything before them?
License Commission? Not that I know of.
They just made a comment.
We sent this, we sent this allocation to them for comments.
Oh, okay.
That's great.
Okay, I did a site walk. I did go there, well, I did it from all of us, through the window. No, I did go in there. It looked like a decent site for what you wanted to do. Okay, do I have any other questions?
Yeah.
Do I have any questions from the audience? I'll answer a second time, do I have any questions from the audience? Okay. I think we're all set. I call for a, on the information meeting, a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second as to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. On the public hearing, okay, a motion is in order as to closing hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public information meeting for site plan application for Research Drive, map 503, parcel 312, lot 10 Wells. I'll have a representative for that.
Don't give me any of this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you're going to.
My husband wants.
I feel like my mother says, "Love you."
Yeah, my mother, my husband wants around with food as if we never owned a plate.
We don't want to do the dishes.
Don't worry, don't.
Sal, you're going to get called to the front.
I know, he's paid.
Sorry, it was.
Okay.
All right.
Are you glad I'm back?
I'm calling Chris Airs with Canyon Engineering here behalf of Lockwood Realty LLC for the construction of a warehouse facility off of Research Drive. Currently, the property is vacant. It's been kind of utilized as a construction storage area for the time being, a processing area. But at this point in time, the site is effectively vacant, brush and scrub brush all over. Just to orientate the board to the site, we have Research Drive with cul-de-sac turnaround portion right here. This is actually a portion of the previous Technology Drive, which was abandoned or discontinued by the board a couple months ago at this point in time. But effectively, as I said, it's the intent of the object to construct a warehouse facility to be comprised of warehouse and office space combination. Access will provide off of Research Drive. Provide a 24-foot-wide paved driveway, which will extend almost in line with the original Technology Drive centerline, which will then bring itself to the mass majority of the site. We'll have parking for employees and customers along the front portion of the site. By code, we're required to have 14 spaces. We've provided 41, that's a surplus for potential growth. And there will be primary access to the front of the building via this location. In addition, the driveway will continue into the rear portion of the site, which will be comprised of griddings and asphalt regrinds and be utilized as a storage area for the opponent's business. The business is LRT Technologies and the remediation of contaminated water and wastewater products. None of that's hazardous material we locate on the site, but the storage of the equipment, tanks, pumping machines, or stuff like that is properly.
Are you trying to be like a contractor yet?
Very similar to one, but not quite.
Okay.
So we'll provide access to that. As for drainage, we're proposing to direct on that. Majority of the runoff towards a single dry detention basin. We have a tertiary, smaller one out in the back portion of the site that we use to capture a small portion of the site. But the majority of the mitigation is provided in a detention basin, which then overflows into the municipal drainage system within Research Drive. We've analyzed the entire Research Drive facility and found that the stormwater system is working in compliance with stormwater management as it was originally designed and built.
And it was built to accommodate this addition?
So as for all the projects on Research Drive, the primary basin that's located near the R and B facility, that was designed to accommodate primarily the roadway and some additional flows. So each site that has got built out would have its own drainage system. So this drainage system works in conjunction with the Research Drive basin to provide the mitigation.
Thank you.
Sewer and water, we're also tied into the existing municipal systems within Research Drive as well. We're providing additional landscape trees along the fringe of the building as required by the ordinance, and providing additional provisions for drive-in access to the building as well on the backside. That's pretty much the general, just the projects. We did receive comments from the various boards and departments. Unfortunately, we didn't have the opportunity to address them at this point in time. But that's why I'll leave that to the board. If there's any questions, I'll be more happy.
Okay. Yeah, we do address those questions now.
I've reviewed them, they're addressable. I just have not been able to update the plan and where it goes to account for that.
Well, why don't we go through it, leave your answer for them, and then we'll decide on the update.
And please, I need to go through the driveway and access all the way through the driveway? I can't see it from here, and I don't know what that is.
It's kind of a mosaic, if you will. You have this little block here, that's Research Drive.
Yep.
Here's the driveway that extends, and it matches up with right here.
Okay, no, no, how wide?
24 feet.
So this essentially takes and replaces Technology Drive?
For a lighter, better term, yes.
Okay.
For this block. For this block. It's going to be private, there's no more right-of-way there.
Right.
Well, there. Is there still some land available closer to Lilith Street?
That's not owned by the applicant or the main current landlord, it's owned by different landlords.
Yeah, that was a separate piece.
Okay. So if they ever want to do something, that's going to not go to Lilith. Okay. Okay.
So I'll start with.
Start with the DPW?
DPW, yes. They have a comment relative to test pits within the basins. Those test pits haven't been complete yet, but this project does have to go in front of the DPW for stormwater permit, so we can address those comments, or address that during that filing process, which usually occurs after we go through the planning board process. That's available, yeah, it'll be eventually resolved.
Did you add fire first?
Oh, I am doing a list of ones I have. I had DPW first, that's fine.
Oh, all right.
All right, well, I have fire next, who's this one from?
Fires first, right?
Uh, it can be, yes. I don't know what you're talking about.
It can't be now, because you already talked about DPW.
Exactly, DPW.
Right, you've got to go to fire.
Fire. Fire, that's relative to accessibility for fire trucks for the fire code. The site has the 24-foot-wide paved driveway, minimums 20. And the building will also be sprinkled, which will be reviewed with the fire department prior to construction.
Right. Okay.
And who said what I have?
Order of health?
I'm building department now.
I'm public access. On Facebook?
How was that after that?
So the health department had questions regarding the dumpster on site. We're proposing enclosed dumpster, which will be enclosed in the final fence.
I don't see that on the plan.
Yes. It's for large scale.
It's a little black.
Yeah, it's on the Suomo plan.
Okay.
There will be a dumpster, and there was also a comment raised by the plant director indicating what the material would be, so the plans will be reflected to provide to say a vinyl enclosed dumpster.
They also asked about lighting and.
Yep, so lighting, we are waiting to get back the lighting diagram from our third-party source. Hasn't come in yet, but typically, we will be meeting the requirements of the ordinance, no light shine on the buddy properties. And directional.
Noise?
And noise control.
Direct that to the lighting inspector. The special, did you determine that?
The lighting? We didn't.
We don't have a lighting inspector.
I never think of a. The lighting inspector. The electrician should be able to figure out a moment.
We're going to create an application for that.
The intention. This is.
I think it's one.
Mr. Chair? The intention is that, why do you plan to provide the city at the end of the day is going to comply with the zone? That's really the intention.
And noise, the same answer?
Noise, there's no real heavy machinery working in the back of the portion of the site, it's just exclusively storage. And any repair work that happens will be inside the building, so there won't be an excessive amount of noise in the site. And also, the site's, the entire development is predominantly industrial in nature, so.
Industrial, yeah, great.
It was that, yeah, defenses, you will maybe see right up below, it's kind of nice.
Conservation, just required that native landscaping and tree species be utilized for landscaping. We have several deciduous trees, and those we can have specified as native trees to Massachusetts.
Do we, do we have a landscaping plan?
So we don't have a landscaping plan. We are requesting a waiver from the landscape architect.
But I still want to see a landscaping plan. You can do one.
Just put it on the main plan, what do you plan to put on versus a defined or.
Yeah, so pro- landscaping, and that's another comment that was raised. The plant version, we'll get to those comments. Due to the volatility of landscaping at all points in time in the year, it's very difficult for me to say, yeah, you're going to put an X tree here and a Y tree here because we don't know what species is going to be available from the nursery. So prior to planting, we can provide a landscape diagram showing we're intending to plant maples over here over.
Oh, but you're knowing even more general than that, just, you know, show where you're going to put trees and where you're going to put.
Well, actually, no, the landscape plan says that you're going to put a maple tree, we have a requirement of a certain size, or a, you know, a pine tree, or they were saying we want deciduous, you know, and so we want to know what that, now, we waiver the landscape architect. Ah, okay, that's fine. But I'm not going to waiver the landscape plan because I really want to see whether, and the trees say, yeah, I want to plant them in the spring anyway. So doesn't have to be planted in the middle of the winter. You put up your building, you get your occupancy, and then you plant your trees, you do your landscape in the spring. It doesn't hold the project, but I want to see a landscape plan. I waiver the actual landscape engineer doing it, but, you know, I want to see a plan.
Chris, are the trees shown on the plan? Yes, so the trees are shown on the plan. So that has been addressed. And we have details gone, and the construction details that depict the size and height of the trees to be planted, and all that information is on the planned sect. It is specifics of what kind of, what species of trees is not, is not provided.
Yeah, the doc is all heading, right?
No, that's what I'm saying. What he's showing us is inconclusive.
Well, we just said that he showed us generally. Right. What he was planning to put there, and it was noted on the plan, then they can determine the species of the based on however the soil is or whatever the conditions are. Right. Oh, what's a bill?
Okay, it says a deciduous tree, that's fine. Okay.
So the locations of the trees are designated on the plan. Yes. Who you see has not.
Okay.
Like some of these regular ones.
I couldn't see that on what you had there.
Yes.
At this point here.
About the size of the dumpsters, that's fine.
But that's only a full road, so. The industrial park is really beautiful.
I do.
Which is the most challenging.
Okay, that's. Yeah. Long as he's on here, because. We now have a requirement on the, on the site plan is that there will be an engineering review.
That is what they're requiring.
A change because what we found before was building permits would be an issue, and nobody was looking at the site plan. So now there will be a site plan review separate, okay? And it gets up and.
I don't have.
And.
That's at the end of construction.
What's that?
At the end of construction.
At the end of construction. Basically, at the end of construction, at the point before you get occupancy, okay? There will be a review of the site and say, okay, this is a landscaping that's going to be, and say, if it's going to cost, to do that landscaping is $10,000. I'm just throwing, I don't know about that. It could be $50,000, all depends on the size of the site. Then a bond will have to be issued to cover that landscaping. And then you go ahead, you get your occupancy permit, and then when the next year, that landscaping has to be done. When it's done, you get your bond. We ran into a situation, we run into a lot of situations where inspection was done, and occupancy was given to the permit, and nothing was ever looked at for trees, the landscaping, or the rest of all. Or your drainage, halfway in fact, okay? So we ran into one building a couple of years ago, and remained nameless, they wanted to do an extension, and they want to do the extension. The building was in the, where a detention pond should have been. But 30 years ago, they never did the detention pond, but nobody ever forced them to do it, it was on the plan.
Before you went out.
Okay.
It's not me, it's neither one of us.
Before we were business.
That was before you guys, that wasn't either one of you. And, and we have found several more. And just recently, we had, if you go by Nashua Street and Lawrence Street, is that, you know, they put a nice building, then they just left everything. We had to put extra pressure, okay, for them to do landscaping. Landscaping is about a year later, you know, after the building. But it didn't get done until the building department got involved, and we got involved to put pressure on it. And said we're going to pursue legal action before they did the landscaping, because if we didn't do anything, they would have left it the way it was. We presumed it, let's put it that way.
Do we know?
You know, so I just want to let people know upfront is that we found, and we found quite a few of those in the city where, you know, certain projects were never completed. The landscaping was a done. So we have to do something about it.
All right, comments for the board? This level of detail is too.
That's fine.
You know, we did, if I remember right, there was a, there was a traffic study done at the beginning of the project when we were first. Doing Research Drive. I mean, I, because I know that's one of these places, I just. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So, you know, I'm not, that's my memory, but who knows what went on in my memory? And I don't know, the only question I had, I thought it accommodated for the full build-out and what they thought would possibly be the, you know, some of the cars coming in and out and the traffic impacts. Now, I don't know if they did it on the full build-out or if every lot had added to it. Do you know, Bill?
That's why I'm here tonight, because I'm the only one that has, from my company has the knowledge, back when the project was originally done. When we went through MIBA, the project needed to have an evaluation of the traffic relative to full buildout. At the time, there was a lot of anticipated office space within the park. And so that was, those were the numbers that were utilized. Part of the MIBA requirement was that we provide counts on a periodic basis. And that when those counts triggered a certain volume heading from research drive to the intersection, then we had to do what's known as a warrant analysis to determine whether we need a signal at that, at that point. So the first time that this came up was when the RMB was built. And we had asked the Mass DOT team, we had asked them for a waiver for that, because the count, we had no baseline counts to work with within the park. So they granted us that, so we then built the RMB. Since that time, we've had process cooling approved and constructed, we have condo stone approved and under construction, we have garage tool approved and now under construction. And we have northeast glass, which is approved but not under construction yet. So all the work that was to be done relative to these traffic counts have been post the RMB. But it's also a time period where we're into COVID, and Mass DOT wouldn't allow traffic counts to be taken, because they felt that they would be skewed probably very low. That literally got lifted about a month or two ago. And we had already kind of lined things up with our traffic consultant, Garry Peterson, to do traffic counts, and they're actually scheduled for Thursday. So we're already doing the traffic count information that we need for the park. Doing a traffic study for this one particular site doesn't really make any sense, because of the fact that it's more than just the site at intersection. So we're going to do the traffic counts, and then we're doing a quick warrant analysis to see where we are. And then we'll see what we're going to do relative to the, any potential traffic mitigation. But what we'll be able to do then is we'll be able to come up with an updated study, because we've got a couple of things. One, the size and scope of the project has reduced, because we've cut off that back piece of land. We've eliminated the secondary roadway out to Willard Street, so that has to be reconsidered. The previous reports looked at the lights at both at Willard Street and Central Street, which are no longer impacted by this. So we're really just looking at the intersection at our, at our product entrance. The other things that have happened is that the makeup of the park originally intended has not, has not gone the way that it was originally thought it would go. We thought it would be a lot more demand office space, a lot of it has gone back to manufacturing and warehousing. So all those things are being considered with the new review. When the new review is done, we have to send that off to Mass DOT, we'll provide, plan it with a copy, we actually just did the same exact thing with Brooks Pond. And that same review was done with Mass DOT as well. So from a traffic perspective, we're already working on it from a different, from the MIBA perspective.
From the MIBA, yeah.
So I have requested that, I understand what the police person, whoever it was, is commenting on, but they may not have the history of it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Do we have any questions on that? Yep.
I'm also asking about the light.
Yeah.
Warrant analysis.
And then we can put out a warrant. Around the lights. I'm glad, you know, because I remember, I remember the, I was just. As were three others.
I think, I think that just the makeup, the makeup of the, of the city was building, yeah.
Yeah, no, it is, so true, because back then, the office space was at a premium. You couldn't, you couldn't.
And now with COVID, no one's going to office anymore.
Well, yeah. A lot, a lot of people.
Okay.
So we have some, some housekeeping to do, I think it's relatively minor stuff that we can do with a, with a follow-up with the planner. And we have some consideration on this, because with all the financing going up as fast as it is, we'd really like to try to get the approval tonight, if possible, without waiting for another meeting. We'll follow up prior to issues of the building permit, all of these issues are addressed for the departments.
If we had the MIBA, we're going to get the MIBA review, okay, that's going to be directed to us anyway. And that would require you, if that, if you meet the thresholds, then that requires you to put in signalization and make changes.
But that would affect this project, that would be relevant to the park.
No, no. Throw this part, I'm trying to look at it at the whole. I'm looking at this project as part of the whole. So the input to this project and its traffic will be included in your, in your MIBA review.
Correct.
Okay? So that way it's covered, as far as I'm concerned, it's covered. So then when the MIBA review comes through, it says whether you need mitigation at the entrance or not.
Correct.
Okay, and at that time, we take action on that review, so as far as I'm concerned, it's covered.
Yep, yes.
Okay. Does anybody else have any, do you have anything else you wish to add? That was all, that was all the departments, right?
The exception of. The exception of the planning directors.
Okay. I think we have most of those covered, isn't that, don't we?
They're addressable, I think the only one that was an outlier would be the setback off of the residential districts. There's a existing residential district line that runs along the back portion of the property. The body residential properties are vacant in that district, along, at least along this portion of the property. And the zoning requires may be required, so based on the distance, there's a vacant lot there now, feel that this is.
Yeah, but that's, that could be, that could build up, so. They know they're building some more of those buildings in there, but, you know, and that's another town, so.
No, this is, no, this is the limit, sir.
Yeah.
That's one, sir?
The sterling is to the bottom of the page.
Yes.
Sterling is just bottom.
Sterling is not on the page.
How many feet are you from the residential district?
The limit of work is about 20 feet off.
20 feet off, what's the setback requirement from that, or the buffer?
50 foot from a residential district may be required based on the zoning.
This is a board decision.
It's a board decision, and this design is consistent with all the other industrial uses we've permitted along this portion of the district.
Well, knowing that it's a sensitive area, you know, that we could say, hey, put a 50-foot buffer there. Knowing that, you know, you might want to kind of limit whatever happens on that back edge of the property to kind of dis. What would the residents say a little bit?
What would you imperieve if we making that a larger buffer?
Just the storage space, the proponent has a lot of large tanks, and you need as much space as possible to store them on site. Fract tanks.
Fract tanks. So, so when they pick the tanks up, they pick them up with special equipment, right? And they do, it makes noise, right? I'm just, I'm just throwing this stuff out there, so it makes noise. Now, let's say somebody is in the residency district, it does, I know it's vacant lot now, but like John said, in the future, if it wasn't a vacant lot, that could be kind of problematic to the homeowner, couldn't it? So I'm just wondering, if there's something that can be there that can kind of guide you guys against any of that happening?
Because you've got a house, you got residentially up in that right car, just where you get, and it should, you got, you know, that's fairly close.
But it makes noise, you know, especially at seven, eight in the morning.
Those are five.
Why does that buffer, no? It's 20 feet, and there's an absolutely natural burn that forms along that property line on our side. And we're maintaining that burn as part of, you know, the des.
Oh, maintain, but like.
Well, those are all undeveloped as well.
Correct. All the properties in here are currently undeveloped.
They're undeveloped, but, you know.
That's what I was going to say.
The way people are coming in for developments, I, you know.
There's got to be something you can do to kind of buffer that aside, right?
It's, I'm looking at that as a light.
You got an order.
And what I can say is, at this point, I'd like to see the buffer.
Yes?
Okay, I'd like to see the buffer.
You're worried about people that aren't there yet?
I know, and we're giving them a gift, they're paying for their potential buffer.
Right, and, and if anybody moves in, it's not like you wouldn't know it was there.
It's like first come, first served.
Yeah.
Well, you know, the 50-foot, I don't, you know.
Maybe.
The 50-foot. It's sensitive to that area, having something maybe a foggy place or something in place that you do now. Not even do, you know, not even having to do it now, like, something you know you can do if it becomes a problem.
It is residentially, I wouldn't, if that was rural residential, lots, lots are required, okay? Then I'd say, I'd be a little more like, but residentially development is going to be relatively close. It could be relatively close, and.
Could be.
And I, it could be, and I think, I think 20, 20-foot buffer is insufficient. 30 or 40 maybe, you know, maybe not 50, but I'd like to see an increase on that.
Oh, and that's the ones that go straight out.
Yeah.
Off his ledge, those houses are running down at Woolworths. Mr. Chairman, if I may.
May for the record.
Patrick McCarty, McCarty Company. So we are, we're going to be the site work contractor and builder for this project. I understand where you're coming from, I do kind of agree with some of the other members of your board, that if there's no development there, then as Ms. Vittori also said, you're kind of granting a gift to somebody that's not there yet. I'd also ask you to consider that those lots are fronted on Willard Street, and the grid goes up pretty substantially from Willard to there. So if you notice the other houses on that section of Willard Street that have been built more recently are way down at Willard Street because of the site development costs.
I also say difference, there's often no sewer up there.
Yeah, there's no sewer on that section of Willard Street, so they'd have to get septics in. And also consider the cost premium of industrial land in Lemonster, there's not anything left. And so the land that is available, these applicants such as LRT are paying a premium for that land, and so therefore they want to use as much of it as possible. They are a Lemonster business, they've been a business since 2011, they employ 28 employees, and I think all of us have driven by their current location on Crawford Street, and have seen that they've clearly outgrown where they're at. They have a 9,000 square foot building now that they've crammed.
Where are they located now?
On Crawford Street.
Razor Bay.
As you make the bend, it was, it was Bluewater Building for.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's at Tan, yep.
Okay.
So they've clearly outgrown there, they actually have their building, and they have some of their tanks stored on the adjacent properties, parking lot, the Joe Spounds building there, where. So, you know, they're, they're in Lemonster, they're staying in Lemonster, they're looking to make a substantial investment and continue to employ 28 people, so as I've heard repeated to me several times being before this board, thank you for bringing industrial industry to Lemonster and keeping it in Lemonster. I think in this instance, we need to remember that. And I would echo Mr. Hannigan's comments about respectfully requesting an approval this evening with conditions. This is the final step in the process, the legal's been done, the title's been done. The appraisal's been done, the phase one's been done, so once the planning board approval is in hand, they can schedule the closing of the loan, and this project can move forward, so being that it's October, time really is of the essence, and we're quickly approaching winter. So ask you to respectfully consider what I had to offer this evening, and let's keep the Lemonster business in Lemonster.
Mr. Chair, I think that we, I, we have a problem, you know, maintaining the 20-foot that was shown, you know, and that I think is a condition that that, that that area could be maintained as a buffer between the property, we don't get any closer than the 20 feet in that area, I think that that would be satisfactory. If it was absorbed.
How about, how about if you increase your, your trees or something along that?
Garberides or something?
Well, alabides will not work, it'd be more deciduous trees to be along there.
But there's, there's that whole other lot on the other side of the line is trees right now. So we'd be planting trees to screen trees.
Yeah, but I don't know what that's going to be in the future.
Neither do we, and so.
Yeah, and that's my problem.
They, yeah, that's.
That's an 11-foot lot with access on Willard Street, it's going to be a subdivision.
Yeah.
And it's just a question of how many houses they can fit on it.
But they're going to want, they're going to be, they're going to be required for a buffer also, so.
Right.
That's, that's up to them.
They'll have their own design considerations coming before this board.
No, we're not to put houses up with enough.
I don't know.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I can't read it, my eyes are bad.
It's on the, on the land, give the elevation of the proposed parking lot and then onto the property line.
Sure, so at the highest point, the firm sits at around the 540 elevation.
Yeah.
540.
It reaches a high point of around 539, but then quickly drops down to 534 at the low end, near the base. So there's quite a bit of elevation really.
Six feet. Over, over.
Yeah, 533, 575.
Six feet over what, 100, about 300 feet, whatever.
That's right, yeah.
So I mean, that, that keeps them off the something, just because the berm is high.
Yeah. Is that, yeah, and what are you going to have for on the.
Sort of they can maintain 20.
It's going to be, it's going to be remaining intact. So right now, it's a combination of brush and tall vegetation. That's going to remain intact, and the limit of work will be just to regrade that area to make it a smoother surface for storage.
And there'll be a noticeable.
There will be a noticeable.
Gradual to six feet. Yeah, that's all, and then that'll probably keep them on.
And you got the site contractor right here listening to you.
Yep.
Yeah. No, that's why, that's why I said that. He knows, that he knows.
Can I? And I didn't cheat on my landscaping, I'm talking about.
Yeah. How could you? You followed him, dude.
Oh, Jesus. Yes, you had a question, Carol?
Well, no, well, I also want, I'm just making sure. Well, I also just, I know it's semantics, but it's important, it also says that where industrial use of butts a residential district, a landscape buffer of a minimum of 50 feet in depth designed to mitigate the impact of the industrial use on a budding residential districts may be required.
May.
So it's your discretion, Mr. Chair.
But that's what we wanted to do, is bring it up, we didn't want it to be.
No, no.
Lot adapted.
Yeah.
So depending on contour of land, what's.
Well, contour has to. Where is that, that much of a berm? That would average about 20, 30 feet, yeah, about, a little more.
In height?
No, six feet.
No, six feet.
Take that to max. Over the length of the property line, but at least it's a demarcation.
But then it slopes from there back down to Willard Street, correct, Chris?
I believe so. Yeah, it's.
Okay.
That's right here.
Okay. Do we have anything else? Would, do we have anything else?
I'm good.
Any questions you want to add?
I will be close to you.
Sir? Anything, we're all set?
Um, not unless you want architectural elevations. Um.
Boom.
Boom.
Ask him, you shall.
So it's pretty much, as Patrick can probably explain, it's a steel structure, back pitch roof. Typical of what you're seeing in the rest of the development.
Yeah.
And you're satisfied with the dumpster screening?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, they've agreed to, so the dumpster have a screen, so.
And without a telescope, nobody other than an LRT employee is going to see it. What's the distance from research drive up just to the site, 300 feet?
215 feet to the property corner, and then you have another 100 feet or so to the building itself, so it's.
They'll be up, they'll be up on that.
Trying to be a wise guy?
No, no, I'm just saying, they'll be up on there every little while.
See you guys chat so well, now you're in the middle of it.
I wonder, I wonder if that building in town.
Yeah.
It's been a while, we've been out of town, so why?
I haven't seen, that's what I'm saying, I haven't seen you in a while, okay?
Other than our own, we, well, not, Rollstone downtown.
Okay.
So it's nice to be back in town, so I'm anxious to not have to drive an hour.
Yeah, it's nice.
Okay, do I have anything to add on this? Do I have any questions, any other questions from the board? Or what from the audience? Any other, I got two people in here.
We actually, this is essentially, see, you're better, you're a father, definitely. We keep going. I was just going to say, this plan is essentially just Central Street turned upside down, I think Bill's like using the same plan and.
Yeah.
Doubling his price, that's all.
It's a much bigger building.
He stretched my scale, made it a bigger scale. But it's all to scale still, right.
Okay.
That was Paul's motion to close.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded to close. Have any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, Paul, if it was say aye.
Aye.
If I say no, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Call to order.
Patrick McCurley, excused, Paul Weiser.
Here.
Sal Chutoni.
Yeah.
Carvatore Oso.
Here.
Jason Parre.
Here.
Tom Kergan, excused. Dean Baudier.
Here.
John Susan.
Yeah. Minutes of previous meetings.
August 22nd. It's in your pack there.
Okay, do we have any additions, correction to addition, oh, correction to additions? Here now, I'll call for a motion.
Motion's just accept the minutes.
Motion made, do I have a second? Do I have a second, though?
My second myself? I have a second myself.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All say no? Motion approved. No new plans. Opened a site plan application for area man you, two sixty-one, Paso Les Starbucks restaurant. For our concerned, they didn't show up tonight, we had a lot of problems with their their traffic and then our peer review substantiated out most of our concerns. So at this point, I would entertain a motion that they be allowed to withdraw without prejudice.
So a second.
Is that what we, is that we closed the, can they do that after we close the meeting?
We closed the hearing.
Close the hearing, we can't just, we just don't deny it?
We could deny it.
Just let it lapse.
Well, you have to deny it without prejudice so they can come back.
Yeah.
Right, that way they can...
Well, if we deny it, they get, they get two years.
If we deny, it takes them two years to reconsider.
Well, but there, I think there's a vehicle in which they can file a motion to reconsider, but I think once we've closed the meeting, I don't think we can have them...
No, we're telling them to withdraw, that's all done.
I don't think we can, I think once we've closed the meeting...
Okay, then, then we just...
Then we have to take some action on it.
Oh, we take another action that we take.
No action, if we take no action, then I think it can be approved by...
Yeah, we can't, no, we have to take action, because if we take no action, within twenty days, it's approved. Okay?
All right.
So, so a motion would be in order to, to deny.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
So, but that still means they can't come back for treatment.
Well, but there's a vehicle in it.
No, they can, they can, because it's without prejudice.
I'm confident there's a vehicle in which they can, we've done that before, they filed a motion to... But I mean, we have nothing to request a withdrawal, we have, I think they have to request a withdrawal. Do you have that vehicle?
Correspondence.
For us people.
I thought without prejudice means that they can just reapply, you know, two years.
Right.
Within the two-year period.
That's right, there's no two years, but I thought there's still something if they wanted to come back. But I, we have to take some, I don't think we, I think if we say it's withdrawn, I think that's, and we've closed the hearing, I think that's essentially the same as taking no action, then it's a constructive approval.
Can't, it's withdrawn, because they didn't withdraw it.
Okay, so then, so yes, so then the motion was, the motion would be to deny.
They're not withdrawing, we're withdrawing a form, that's not our right, our perp, right?
Oh yeah, yeah, you're right.
So, nine. And there's a vehicle, I think there is a, you know...
But I think, but Bill has to point to that, I don't think there's a...
For two years?
I don't think so.
Not cycling.
No.
No, it's just a site plan.
It's just a site plan.
Right, 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 right.
All right, I'll make a motion to deny with help, that's just...
Nope, deny.
Just deny.
Deny, sorry. Yeah, then they can reapply. They're waiting for a client.
Yeah. Okay.
Checks in the mail.
Motion be... So I have a motion by Paul.
Comfortable tonight.
Do I have a second by, uh...
That's...
Yes, yes, yes.
Rather than to deny. Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. Site plan application, six seventy Central Street, map, five eight two Paso's, eighteen to nineteen, Trucking Transportation Building.
There are two waivers.
Okay, and we have waivers.
Section...
We have waivers on the site plan or on the special permit?
You have to do the...
Yeah, okay.
Section sixty, twenty-two dash sixty-two point three point one. Pertaining to the requirement for the landscape plan to be prepared by licensed landscape architect. And then section twenty-two dash sixty-three point one, point four, point three, point one, requiring a sidewalk be installed from the development to the street.
Okay.
Okay.
And you have to take them one by one.
Right. So that's the only waivers we have?
That's all I have.
Okay. The site plan application for six seventy, motion would be in order to approve with a landscape plan waiver.
Yeah, this...
The motion would do one by one, each one individually. Okay, so waiver on, motion being in order to accept the landscape plan waiver.
So...
I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Well, yes, the landscape, no.
The landscape plan.
Landscape architect plan waiver with the markings, the vegetation on the, on the plan. Right, or words that, right, that's what we said, and they're already on there, they're already, it already shows you where...
They're on the plan, I mean, the waiver is on the landscape architect.
Correct.
The landscape plan is not on the landscape, the state capital landscape plan.
That's correct.
It's on the architect.
Yes, that's right, that's what I was defining.
Okay.
Who made the motion?
I'm reading.
I'll make that motion.
So, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Paul. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. Second.
See, after Central... To accept the waiver, section twenty-two dash sixty-three dot one dot four dot three dot one pertaining to sidewalk.
Okay, a motion made on that, on the sidewalk. Any discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. Okay, on the application of the site plan with waivers, do I have a motion?
I agree, we approve the, those are waivers to waivers.
And Department Head.
Yeah, okay, and Department.
Outstanding Department.
Outstanding Department, you call it.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye? Do I have a motion?
He's got the motion seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. Special permit application for six seventy Central Street, map five eight two Paso's, eighteen and nineteen, Trucking Transportation Building.
Deny.
Okay, yeah. Okay, motion would be to accept with, with previous waivers on the site plan.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries, good luck, folks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
That's great news.
Site plan application on Research Drive, map five one area, Paso's three dash twelve, lot ten warehouse. Okay, we're gonna discuss on this. We got a landscape plan waiver. A landscape architect plan.
Now, the part about the buffer words within our discretion, do we have to affirmatively or we just approve it and...
Well, we have to...
I think we just, I don't think we have to...
You want to approve it.
Because I don't think they need a waiver for that, because I think it's within our discretion.
It's within our discretion.
It's not a waiver, you can make it a condition.
Well, it is a plan.
But we don't need to, we could, we could do that anytime.
If we accept a plan as it presented to us, it shows the twenty feet and the berm.
And we don't need to take any action.
Yeah, we don't need to take any action on that.
That's right.
Because as long as...
So it's just the one waiver then for the...
Just the one waiver.
It's on the traffic, right?
No, well, it's the thing.
On landscape. We don't, that's right, we discussed that, that can be done overall.
The traffic is being done.
Yeah, but you have to be cautious, because that, that's, when we say that we approve it with the department heads and the police department's request of the traffic statement.
Yeah, we just want to say, we'll just say...
Outstanding.
We didn't take a vote on that, so we would have to, we would have to take a vote on the, on the police department.
No, why don't, why don't we just say we're going to approve it with the condition of the fire department?
You can just leave out, please.
Conservation, I don't know if we care about the native species only. Seems like it's violating the Congress, because that's what I'm calling it.
Yes.
Is that wopping on?
And then the DPW, and that, like, we just specify, and I don't think we have to include the...
I'll second Carol's motion.
So that's my motion.
You're gonna do the waiver first.
So I move to approve the request for the waiver.
I'll second that.
A motion made to request on the waiver on the landscape architect. Any discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All say no? Okay.
Now, I'm thinking, Charles.
Then I make the motion to approve the, the site, what is it, a site?
Site plan.
No, site plan, no, the special permit was on.
Site plan.
With the...
With the waiver.
With the waiver, with the condition as outlined of the fire department? I don't think we have to do board of health, because you have the dumpster on site. Assessor approves, I don't know, conservation?
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
DPW? Yes, sir.
Do we have any plans else to add?
I think they addressed them.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'll second that one.
I have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All say no? That was approved.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Your life.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hey, you know Charlie?
Of course.
Charlie, the guy, he walks like this. He's still, you watch the big student, you know Charlie, he gotta watch.
Doody.
I know, he taught.
Sal, Sal, he's too young.
He is too young.
Thank God.
No, you missed out on a beautiful culture guy. The wife's all heated and the girlfriend's heated, but I'm sorry.
Okay, communications. City Council petition.
That's funny.
Act point twenty-three, request to amend zoning ordinance pertaining to lot size requirements for a lot deviation in the residential A zone for lot size minimum of seventy-eight thousand seven hundred eighty square feet.
One says thirty-seven. So they want to go from half acre to two quarters of a lot?
No, no, let me, let me explain it, okay?
Lot size.
If somebody has a minimum lot size of thirty-seven thousand seventy, okay, quit be larger. Today, that lot, that large lot could not be subdivided, because you can't get two Puerto Rico lots, or half acre lots out of that, okay, with your twenty-one thousand eight hundred. But we have, I went through the, the city and looking at the assessors' map and trying to judge lots and so... There's probably fifty or sixty lots in the city on existing property lots and most of these are in the older sections of the city that were developed already. Subdivisions, any subdivisions that were built in the last thirty years were all built to sign, to code. But prior to that, to the lot, you know, smaller lot sizes, or to the...
Well, it was twelve-five until ninety, what, six?
Something like that, yeah.
For residential, it was twelve-five to begin with.
So, so anyway, by doing this, somebody that has a relatively large lot, they could subdivide it one time. Okay, with a special permit to us, and that would open up about fifty lots, and my guess is about fifty lots in the city. We're having a problem with subdivision, this would also help older couples, because they tend to own these homes. If somebody wants to retire, they could subdivide their lot and sell the second lot. And that would also, there's a, there's a problem in the city with, we're running on land and by putting these houses out and looking at a number of subdivisions like on Brattle Cross and Saddle Fred and Farm Hill, Holland Woods, I forget the names of the other, Master Park, are all open space projects. Now, they did the grid of twenty-one five, okay, but they actually built the houses on twelve-five.
Right, that's right.
Okay, and if you go into those subdivisions today, there's open space behind them, and some of them, the open space is off to a distance, but those, those subdivisions look pretty nice. They've been up good, you got nice homes, they're, they're around thirteen to, most of the homes are probably fifteen, sixteen thousand square foot homes, you know, they're not, they're not thirty thousand.
No, no, well, you know what John's talking about, is you go up Main Street, go up Pleasant Street, go up Prospect Street, go up all these thoroughfares, no, they weren't thoroughfares in the day, those were just the streets that things were built on. Every lot was twelve-five, when you get closer to town, they're even smaller. We changed the regulations to kind of preserve some privacy in the residence or neighborhood. So we went through that whole series on the rezoning of there to make it a half acre lot. So, I mean, you got, you got some arguments on that side, true, but if a home was in an area, let's say, in my mind, if you're in Residence A and you're right in the middle of an area where all the homes are twelve thousand square foot lots or twelve-five, and you could, you could cut, you could cut a lot out of what you own and make it a twelve-five lot and if it's in conjunction with the neighborhood, and we control it by a special permit, it'd probably be a good thing, wouldn't it?
Yeah. And I'm not going to the twelve-five, I'm going to sixteen thousand.
Yeah, yeah, whatever it is.
So sixteen, so sixteen thousand would be actually larger than the twelve-five, and still larger than residential B. Okay, and it would still be a nice good-sized lot, and somebody could, and deviate on the lot and we could...
But we can make it in conformance with the neighborhood that they're requesting it from, right? For the special permit.
Exactly. So it gives us some alleviation, it opens up some lots in the city, and it's not like it's a big development, because it's gonna be here and there, so the impact of the schools wouldn't be great, because...
It's a house here and there.
Yeah, the house here and there around the town, you know?
It's not a lot of, in Residence, in Residence A, until that ordinance was changed, it's not, you know, I'm wondering if, if some of these people may be grandfathered, but that's, it couldn't be.
No, no, they're not grandfathered, because if you get, even if you own two lots, those two lots become one.
Right.
Okay, so this allows you basically to break out that lot, they have to come in with an air, and I have to be approved, and then they can get a special permit.
Make it an air, you gotta make it a special permit.
It is, that's right.
Oh, and I based on, yeah.
Based on this.
But we're just scheduling it today.
Yep.
But that's, yeah, I went through it, so we're scheduling it today.
We can do November seventh.
I grew up on fifteen thousand square feet.
So November seventh, what time?
Six thirty.
And maybe people opposed to it, so we can't sit here and make it sound like it's a fair complete.
Oh, no, no, no. So six thirty. Uh, do I have a motion on that?
Yeah.
No motion, Paul, seconded by Jason. All in favor for November seventh, six thirty? All for the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. The second one, the City Council petition, ten dash twenty-three, request to amend zoning ordinance pertaining to lot with requirement for lots in the rural residential zone. And I'm probably gonna do this, I'm thinking about doing this on residential A right now. Right now, our requirement's called for a one hundred twenty four inch. But where the house is, a hundred thirty.
Funny, isn't it?
Hundred thirty. You're gonna go to one thirty, all of a sudden your lot's gotta go this way, and then it goes back, in the back. And I, and I'm saying, you already have to have an acre lot.
Yeah, it's, no.
The extra ten feet means nothing on this thing, but what it does is, we end up coming up with these convoluted lots that have to be off sized, because what do I, adding that extra ten feet bulge in the middle.
What, is that just a misprint?
No, that's the way it's done.
Find out why that was that way.
We can't, I can't, I tried to find out why that was done, where it was done, I can't find anything.
They probably just printed it wrong.
No, no, because it's also in Residential A. Residential A is eighty feet and a hundred feet where the houses. Okay, so what I'm saying is, all we're doing is to make the lines straight. Okay?
So you're saying with that Residence A as well, and.
Yeah, we have.
Just carry the width back to, from the frontage to where the.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yeah, so this will be.
But what, how to change that?
Schedule it, we'll schedule it for six thirty-five, oh.
Six thirty-five, when on November seventh?
Yeah.
That'll be the motion.
And.
Second.
And then motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. Okay. Do we have anything on the director's report?
We do. I got a letter, I brought this up to John. This came in the mail today, it's in regards to an old subdivision on Sawyer Way, I think it's called, it might be the Day Street.
Yeah.
Subdivision.
The Day Street.
It's from a legal firm representing New England Land Company. And they're basically saying they don't have any funds to maintain the street this winter. And they are informed to finish the road, there's a few items necessary.
Expensive.
So the road's not finished. And they want to offer to resolve this by giving a lump sum to the city of forty thousand dollars